I'd like to call today for me that it's on the county conditions to order. Mr. Harris, would you please give say to him?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that you exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right. Then proceed to the nearest stairwell, direction to which are indicated by exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you cross the street to either our parking lots to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway where we will remain until it's safe to exit. Thank you for your time.
Good gentlemen, God our Father, we thank you for the beauty of your love and the greatness of those things that you allowed us to share and to enjoy. As we partake in this meeting tonight, may we decide through the mind of the divine word of God that we will make the decisions that's good for the county in which we live and the citizens that we serve. Bless us only you bless, in Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Harris, the agenda back. I'm moving to refer to that question. All in favor, let me know by one time.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other, I'll switch the agenda or agenda just a little bit. I told my board, and I've also asked the nominee, we're going to have an election of office.
You're all right, you're all right.
And my board. The board now, now, for that vice chair. My nominee, Representative Wayne Hines.
My second.
Any other nominees? All in favor, let me know by, uh, I'll vote for the eight.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There none?
Go ahead, you go ahead. You're gonna be in the house.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Moving back up on the agenda, with first I'd like to note, we have a member, ex-governor, here tonight. Uh, we have Mr. Tom Cherry here tonight, and he's got you, and Mr. Carter. We have also with us, Jonathan Melvin, Carol White. Who will do the front, who needs to. Our registered Ds, on the status, the status show. Any other? Executive officials, or past executive officials. At this time, we have a recommended nominee. We have a recommended nominee from the Democratic Party to appeal the debate to, uh, Mr. Trump. A motion is a nomination for Mr. Ralph Thompson Weld. Hold your second. Are there any nominees from this board? Are there any other nominees? Here none, I think yourself. All in favor of Mr. Ralph Thompson Weld to be the new county commissioner, ready to be known by regional hand, please, writing? All opposed? Here none? Mr. Weld, would you please come forward? And Oliver Carroll White, describing. After the prior end, we'll take a five-minute recess, for the public to.
You, Ralph Weld, do so, you swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Edgecombe County Commissioner. So help you God. Good day, gentlemen.
Yeah, uh-huh, go ahead, go ahead. Hey, how you doing?
We could have really. Could you take me to the desk?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, you fine.
That's the, that's the hot season. Like, Mr. Weld, stand, please stand.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, we call the evening to order. It's called again, it's called again, it's called to order, and we see some comments, questions, votes, and amendments, because you don't have a government order. We've got a special. Probably even called for order. Please, if you please read the public notice.
Yes, sir. Public notice, here I get, that a public hearing is held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, April 1st, 17:00, on the second floor, 201 St. Andrew Street, Harrow Road, North Carolina. Renmin article four, section four dash seven point two, special use permit reprocess. Four dash seven point four, recommendations on special use permits. Four dash seven point six, A, Board of Commissioners action on special use permits. And A dash four dash six, special use permits flow chart. The proposed amendment will require us to middle of the special use permit application, site plan, and P to the zoning administrator twenty days prior to the planning board meeting. The planning board will then review the application and make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for public inspection during business hours, early into five p.m. in the planning office room 205, County Administrative Building 201, St. Andrew Street, Harrow Road, North Carolina. All parties and interested, all interested residents are invited and urged to be present to make a agreement this twenty-second day of March, 2019. By word of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, I thank you, one go, for to the board.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir, so you'll recall at your last meeting, uh, this item was brought to your attention. The purpose of the recommended amendment was basically to follow the practice that we had in place. Currently, the UBO states that the board may send, uh, special use permits to the planning board for review and recommendation. Uh, the what's before you now is to change that language that shall go before the planning board for review and recommendation. You had some discussion at your last meeting as to whether or not you wanted to maintain an opportunity to forego the planning board if the situation arises. And so, it's being brought for public comment tonight in your front of the deliberation.
Is anybody here on the public, that wish to speak at this time? If so, please come forward, just to name address for public record. Hearing no comment, uh, it's called again, it's a crime. And you read the text amendment there for this UBO. I believe it was my concern at that time that we should maintain an option. Or in case any emergency came upon, I think that comes to mind, the last, uh, one that we did was one that came to us within that, uh, twenty-day conference. And the board did not have an opportunity at that time, based on their orders. We could not have done that, my thing is, if not, if not, help me with, okay, anything that you need to, okay? And I asked the, uh, the staff to look at it also, but I'm concerned that we should not box ourselves in. So that, uh, I do believe that the planning board, I, I really believe that we get the best information when the planning board looks at it, but I am concerned if we box ourselves in, then I have a flexibility to, to, when something comes to us, to leave, if we want to, we can especially know.
I have the, uh, I have the exact same opinion.
Because let me ask you this, we could feel, if we maintain this, nothing to say that we couldn't refer that.
That's why, please, I'm under that, Mr. Evans said, allow me to send you the application to the planning.
Uh, I believe that if we maintain that flexibility, we could also, it's just that we maintain a flexibility, except to. I believe that we still have the flexibility for most of the direct information before we make a decision on it, send it back to the planning board, okay, correct? Now, if there's any other, uh, in which we are going to maintain it, we need to take no action, okay, correct?
That's right, your, the current language says that, says that you may forward it to the planning board for review and recommendation. So, if you want to keep that same position, we will take that.
Any, any other concerns from the board? In terms of how we might, you understand, Mr. Weld, are you following us?
Yes, sir.
If not, ask, please ask the question, okay? Any other concern? What is the position of the board?
I've stated my position, I'd like the flexibility. I think the planning board should help us in review and we take consideration of the times of what just occurred. If we need to act within that period of time, we like to have the flexibility.
And I, I, I think, and staff can reserve that, certainly, uh, making sure that when it comes to us and helping us, we don't not take that action in terms of, because I think we do need to inject the effort of the planning board. Is there any agreement on that?
Yes.
Hearing none, we need to take no action. That, that remains as it is? Number two, at public hand, it's called to order to receive, send us the comments and questions, goods, and proposed technical amendments of the Unified Development Ordinance Vegetator Bump. It's called again, it's called to order, please read the public notice, Mr. Peters.
Yes, sir. Public notice, here I get, that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, April 1st, 17:00, on the second floor, County Administrative Building 201, St. Andrew Street, Harrow Road, North Carolina. Renmin article thirteen, section thirteen dash nine, subsection C, vegetative buffer. The proposed amendment will increase the insulation standards of every vegetation buffer for all the two and three stoner introduced. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for public inspection during business hours, early into five p.m. in the planning office room 205, County Administrative Building 201, St. Andrew Street, Harrow Road, North Carolina. All parties and interested, all interested residents are invited and urged to be present to make a agreement this twenty-second day of March, 2019. By word of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, I thank you, one go, for to the board.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, you will remember at your last meeting, we had some discussion about the proposed language or changes in the language to the Unified Development Ordinance. We felt that would, um, better handle our requirement for vegetator bump. Our ordinance as it stands does have requirements in there, but as you've heard from some previous projects, they needed some amending because, uh, sometimes there would be, uh, a height requirement is not sufficient for screening residential areas and that type of thing. So, uh, the planning board spent some time on preparing recommended language that you've had, you've seen. There's also a copy in your packet for tonight. Also, want to point, uh, in your agenda package, since that last meeting, and here, there's a letter in the packet from Art Bradley, our extension director, Spencer Thomas, who's an extension agent, and Scott Kine, who's the director of our soil and water halls. They met and talked about alternatives in areas where vegetation, um, could have a difficult time growing or cannot be established. So, they are offering, just for your discussion tonight, and you'll see in your packet, in those areas, uh, a proposed requirement of that would call for, um, green slat privacy fencing to be an alternative to vegetative buffer when that's not able to be established. They also recommend that in highly sensitive areas such as near residential lots, within three hundred feet of residential lot, green slat privacy fence be used in addition to vegetative buffer. I do want to point out that this, uh, as I mentioned, this has come up, their recommendation has come up, uh, since your last meeting. The planning board has not had opportunity to meet to discuss this. And so, but I just wanted you to make aware, make you aware, I think this is a, um, like a good alternative for you. Also, I'd like to point out that Mr. Jonathan Melvin, who's chairman of the planning board, is here tonight, and he is, uh, he happens to be a landscape architect, I believe that's the right, and so, who may be able to also some additional advice if you have, if you have any questions.
Need our extension directors, so number two, we need them, but this is the public record, or do, the letter was satisfied?
I think the letter was satisfied, if you have questions, yeah, we have some.
At this time, we call for public comment. Anybody to come, please state your name, and I'll just, Mr. Harris, if you'd like to speak. Anybody would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Jonathan Melvin. The address? Okay, fifty-two, sixty-four, Morning Star Church Road, Alver, North Carolina. Happy to be here in front of the Board of Commissioners, uh, this evening. Look, having, had a chance to study the, the letter thoroughly, uh, as a professional landscape architect, some of the concerns that I've got on this recommendation, um, is that professionally concerned at the aesthetics of a green slat fence. Also, uh, there's comments in the letter saying regarding soil conditions. Uh, after forty-three years of being in the profession, I've never run across a site that could not be addressed in terms of soil condition. Soil amendments are needed, there's great issues that need to be fixed, um, if you're going to do a solar farm. And, um, Edgecombe County, it's known for its soil, an agricultural county, so, uh, I can't imagine a situation where its soils are not suitable or cannot be recognized, that's the issue. In our planning board, uh, we have, you know, listened to the public sector and some of the concerns that we're hearing from our board, uh, regarding buffers and the text amendment that we've proposed is deepening up the buffer, increasing the green aspect of buffer to the point that you would not see the fence at all in one of these buffer areas you tour. And, uh, so, from my experience with plant selection and landscaping in general, we feel like we've addressed that issue quite well. I feel like, based on comments we're hearing from the public, that, uh, you know, if we start with slatted fences, it's going to give it a more industrial look, and I don't think it is what Edgecombe County wants to be made for. Especially on the wool set. Have we heard comments about it being garlick, concerns about that, the solar farms. Uh, more and more solar farms are coming to Edgecombe County, so we want to be wise about how we address solar farms and buffering. And the concerns the public might have, so that the public has a good positive feel about the solar farms as opposed to a negative one. So, I feel like if we put the green slats in the fencing in residential areas, the public is not going to accept that, and I think that would be a major concern that we would have. Professionally, I've really got concerns about the aesthetics of the green slatted fence. And a more green look, uh, I think would, uh, really look better. It would address density in terms of planting, and so, that chain link fence kind of melts away in time. And I mean, I haven't answered any question that we're willing to.
My question, only question would be, um, has your board seen this letter?
We have not.
Then what you, what you tell us is, that's your, your suggestion as a chair, in terms of what, what you think not necessarily the board right now?
Well, what I'm saying is, uh, my professional concerns, as the board architect, I know, thinking in the process that the board went through in proposing, uh, the, deeping up the vegetation in the screen. Because we're listening to the public and some of the comments they had, and we're trying to craft some language that would address some of those concerns moving forward.
I don't have a question, I agree with more broadly about the industrial look of slat fence, that's what I think.
And, while I'm like, agree with, and I do need to read that, uh, we, we hear some serious concerns when we get them with the last solar farm, in terms of areas of solar farm that should say die too. And, um, some of the, uh, some of the experience before that, and that if they put other trees back there, nothing like would grow. So, uh, I, I do think that the planning board should have an opportunity to review this proposal from our professionals, who saw conservation and aspect extension, when it gets back, uh, depending on what, what comes back to that, and we might make a decision to do some modifications in it. Any other questions or comment, any other comment, Mr. Harris?
Uh, any, um, I would like to comment, I could, uh, I can speak from the board. In the language that we're proposing, we're addressing the maintenance, uh, for the planning department to go out on a periodic basis and examine that material and be sure that it meets the standards of the ordinance. So, that's something that we have addressed.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you all.
Anybody else?
Oh, well, yes, we do have.
Please come forward, please come forward.
Do you think, thank you very much, let me speak to that? Hey, John Kilbride, thirty-eight, eighty-six, Hartsdale, North Carolina. Uh, I would agree with Mr. Melvin that the green slat is not the most ideal thing, most of them. But I think it looks a lot better than we got out there already, proven with the vegetation in the county. Now, if the vegetation that's going, of the deer farms is coming in, is going to hide everything, then it will hide this green slat. And I had personally, rather, look at the green slatted fence out there, that I had, little growing trees, haven't reached maturity yet, solar panels behind, that looks a lot more industrial than what I think fence would, and a lot more city pleasing to the.
Good evening, Commissioner. Our Brad at Fourth Twenty-Five, Worsley Road, County Extension Director, here in Edgecombe. And, uh, with this at your direction, previous two meetings, we had this discussion before about the concern about vegetation and what we were seeing. And, so, we came up with these options in order to look at, uh, the type of fence that we were looking at does not replace a vegetative buffer, but gives you something immediate that you're not seeing until these plants reach maturity. The solar operations that are in existence now have been here for a while and haven't reached maturity yet, and so, that's why we're still having this discussion. Also, we ran into certain situations where there were not plants there, uh, they died, the red soles, and that kind of thing. And so, this would operate a replacement for that. I think one of the things of concern is that when a company submits a plan to the planning board, I don't know what detail that they go into for their vegetative screening. And it's probably site dependent on what we need, um, what type of soils are relevant, planting time, that kind of thing. The new one that's going in on, uh, four lane sixty-four, it's going on both sides of four lane sixty-four. And if you put it in according to the standard, you'll still see it, you know, even when those plants mature, um, you see at this time of year. And we may need the option to increase or recommend something taller, uh, that helps us in that situation. So, this was just, you know, our recommendations, again, uh, green slat was not to replace vegetation, it was to augment it in places where, you know, people drive out of their driveway every day and look at this, and, uh, that would help give them something until the plants reach maturity. Also, we do have a site in the county that has worked fine with the recommendation that they had. The type of plant they had was planted here enough, uh, that you hard, you wouldn't notice unless you were looking at the site. And it's just a single row of plants. So, again, I think, you know, we need a plan that specifies the species, um, and the design for that site in order for us to consider what is should be. Any questions?
Anybody else to speak?
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to raise a lot of discussion about fence, and I agree with what everybody's saying, most of the fence, uh, vegetation. The percentage of some justice, as we have, he did not maintain, you know, for other areas, and I think we should always do this, that's an option. If we have to, to use a fence, especially in a wet, drought year, and I think that's where the law just came from. But I'd like to see it kind of open ended, so we can do what's necessary, considering the situation, I appreciate your position. The facts are, a lot of this area is not maintained as it should be maintained for vegetation to grow all the time. And I know that because I ride around these places and look at them all the time, and some of them are just very scarce. And you can put anything in the letter of the law, but the letter of the law has to be enforced to make it fair. So, I'm just concerned if we go from there, I set up down, or tie myself, or lock myself into one thing, but maybe more of the, or more of the risks.
Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, um, whose responsibility would it be, would it be the person who actually owns solar's right? Just to make sure that the county does not have to go out and war plants? That's what I'm trying to see, if they're going to be the ones who have to. If they're going to be the ones who have to pay for the fence, as well as the vegetation? Are they the ones who have to go out and make sure the vegetation is continuing to grow? If we have drought, are they the ones to water it? Those kind of things.
So, initially, it would be the developer of the site, ultimately the owner. Sometimes they are the same. Sometimes, in cases some solar farms, you've seen the developer then sells the solar energy system to save dual energy, like for example. In one of them, but either, either or both of those, or both of those would be responsible for that. At the initial planning and then ongoing maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, yes. With the difficulty of growing the buffer vegetation up there, is there a guideline for winter planting or in developing the solar system? Is there an after or before guideline?
I believe that the recommended language addresses that. Previously, it just said, this is what it needs to be, it is specified. When it needs to be planted. I think it addresses now optimal planting, planting time for growth of the vegetation above.
Because it seems that some areas can grow and some areas can't.
Right. And depending on the time of the year, you know, sometimes you might have two sorts of plants that in the summers don't struggle to establish anyway. So, you would have to relax.
Any other comments? I think enough concern has been raised based on all the discussion for us to send it back to the planning board. And with further discussion about extension, shares, and solar conservation, and others that might be concerned. And we can act on this based on if it is revised, or how it's going. Any objections to that?
No, I say we present it back.
There needs to be a motion?
Yes, I make the motion.
Send the motion, send it back to the planning board for further review. And there's a second question. All in favor, let it be known by the vote in time. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here is none. Just send it back. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will be going into the Board of Equalization and Review. And the motion would be to recess regular Board of Permission to review and convene as Board of Equalization and Review. Is there any motion?
No, no.
Question? Ladies and gentlemen, I've said that your Board not yet, not into the church square as a, not a church.
If you're swearing on the ballot, if you place your left hand on the ballot and raise your right hand. If you affirm it, please just raise your right hand. Each of you, you solemnly affirm or swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the constitutional laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith. And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Edgecombe County, North Carolina. And that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendship or obligation. So, have to God. Thank you, South Carolina.
I'd like to call the Board of Equalization and Review to order.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, you do not have any scheduled appointments tonight for appeal? If there are some that comes in between now and your next meeting that's not able to be reviewed and attended to in the office, that will come to your next meeting. You do have some action that you need to take tonight. You'll see in your agenda packet, there are two separate Notice of Decision letters. First one being, where it says at the top, this Notice of Decision would be for a taxpayer who appeals their value that's based on the value that is set after January the first. Then the second Notice of Decision is regarding discovery of buildings. So, this would be something that is discovered after January the first. And so, there are two separate letters. This all used to be in one letter. And it's required for there to be two separate letters. And so, you have to approve the form and language of each of these.
We are approving the form.
The form and language of each of these. Yes, sir. And I need you to ask that you take this action for me.
Is there a motion to approve the Notice of Decision letter?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote in time.
Aye.
All opposed? Here is none. Is there a motion, Notice of Decision regarding discovery of buildings? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that approved? Second. Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote in time.
Aye.
All opposed? Here is none. We have no scheduled appointment?
Yes, sir.
There's no further action for this court? There's no further action at this time?
We ask that you recess this meeting to reconvene at your basis.
Is there motion to recess, recess the Board of Equalization and Review until May sixth?
So moved.
And reconvene as regular Board of Permission to review? Motion?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote in time.
Aye.
All opposed? Here is none. We are now seated again right now, ladies and gentlemen, as your Board of Positions. We wear summer hats. And after that, we'll pick the trails wet off. Scheduled appointments, Mr. Sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First, we have listed tonight, we have this pan pool who is with the Stephanie, who's here to give you an update on that.
Back in the, I don't know the reason behind this, but, so, anything that falls somewhat in the city limits of Rocky Mount is overseen more so by our Nashville District Office. We're in close contact and, you know, I know some, enough to be dangerous about it. So, I don't have the privilege of fully overseeing that.
Do we know who's going to build it, the state? Is the state going to use their own resources and manpower?
Oh, no. We can't expect it out.
Any special start saying, I understand?
Um, I think, uh, I stole these slides from another district to go down this way completely. Um, let's see. I think it said something about twenty, something about twenty, twenty.
Completely. I was just curious. That's okay.
Yes. I'm assuming we do not have a contractor or under contract at the time. Hopefully soon.
What did nine of five not score very well? I'm really curious about that.
Well, that's, that could be an all-day long conversation. But it has a lot to do with, so, basically, our projects are scored by a whole lot of different criteria. And some of that could be economic development, you know, mobility, and just the criteria. And the fact that the sheer nature of the cost that it will take to make those improvements probably hinders it a lot. Just.
Who would I need to talk to? I just thought about, coming out of Virginia to North Carolina, that new pavement from the, from Virginia line down to probably.
One seventy-two mile marker, exactly this project.
I almost lost control of my vehicle while it was raining.
Sure.
And that is unevenly paved.
Sure. It is, so it's not complete. It's still under construction. And there, there's going to be an open graved friction course added to the, the top of that surface, which is that porous asphalt that allows the water to penetrate and run off the road. So, when you're behind a big truck, you don't get that splatter effect. So, that's to be completed as soon as our temperatures get back up and they're able to place that mix. So, we are very hopeful to hear that.
We got lost. Run that down, Ralph.
On the other way, we saw a lot of these questions. If you're going to call Miss Evans and he knows how to get Evans.
He does.
With all of these, well, I'd just like to say, you know, we enjoy our relationship with DOT.
Sure.
And so, it's full you're welcome. Okay? And we just thank you for the request that you do part. And thank all of us, sir. We've had an excellent relationship with all of our DOT personnel and have been, we continue to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just need you to make sure you live in Edgecombe County.
Uh, I married a peanut boy. That, that, we're, we're aboard.
Moving on, Mr. Sir.
Yes, sir. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Scott Bailey with Colored and Ainsborough. I'd like to come and present our, our.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick notes before I begin. I provided slides during this meeting. The reason being that we're waiting for a lot of government commission to pass a lesson on financial statements to complete. We want to get more to do, what's provided, also, financial statements. Pull back if there are requests, changes, or have your comments, if that's in the group of that. Which is, I think, might be better to walk through the results, get some financial highlights, and entertain any questions you have about that process. So, Matt, I'll go ahead and take off. In conclusion of our audit, our goal is to form an opinion on the financial statements, which means we perform all our procedures ultimately to say, ultimately to say whether or not we put financial statements are or are not consistent with the applicable county principles. And in that, we're successful. And we have expressed what we call an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which we usually, in the financial statements, are consistent with governmental accounting standards. We performed our engagement in accordance with both governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards as well. Which allows to, to, all the audits, all the audits we perform. Our audit focuses on our judgment estimates and judgments. Through its course of those, we determine those to be related to allowances and reserves for either uncollectible receivables, for the insurance, the health insurance fund. We consider the official lives of capital assets owned by the county as due significant based on sheer size of volume. The liabilities associated with the pensions and other post retirement benefits are considered significant. Those are primarily estimates in their nature, as well as the estimated cost to close the municipal landfill. So, those areas received some attention from us in the conduct of audit. We considered risks of fraud and compliance through our procedures. We're happy to report we did not identify any of those. We just are. In this year, we implemented three new accounting standards that apply to the county. They were, I can read the numbers, the GASB seven eight, which is mostly technical changes. GASB eighty-six, which relates to debt funding, debt retirement. The most significant, the GASB seven five, which relates to the treatment of unimposed employment. And basically, it affects how the actuaries who value these obligations, how they assess those, and as a result, that is significant. Restatement and net position as a result of that implementation. That implementation affects, affects net position, it should be noted, which is sort of county-wide full accrual accounting. But did not, did not have any significant impacts on fund balance. So, just a quick, quick note there in terms of the effect. But its effect was, was quite significant on that position. Through, of course, for all it, we identified some correcting entries and some, and one past adjustment has been reported to the county who had made those adjustments. So, through that process, we, it was being conducted successfully. So, really, that's kind of, kind of the key ideas that relates to our opinion, to formate our opinion, and kind of how we found it. And if you have any questions at the time, before I move on to some financial highlights.
Actually, please.
Right.
What is the unsigned fund balance as a percent for the whole year? Is it going to exist in the, I'm sorry. To me, that's a half.
It is, and it's included in some of the plans. But I just kind of run through sort of what our goal is, what our responsibilities are. And, you know, kind of some of those things, you know, we have found practicalities. Discuss that upfront. This is kind of a high level of, I have a picture of the calendar. Just a couple of quick notes here. The total assets from business type activities this year were just over sixty million. That is about a little more than a four and a half million dollar increase. Total assets increasing about five point eight million dollars. Deferred outflows, which are associated with pensions and other post-retirement benefits. Those declined, one point six million. Total liabilities increased about seventeen point six million during the current period. They have seventy-four point nine million, fifty-one point seven for the governmental activities, and twenty-three million for business type activities. Moving on to the next slide, I've got analysis of net position. Again, this is more net position on an accrual basis rather than fund balance. But this sort of is, sort of a high level picture there. One of the things you'll notice is that we do have some, some changes from the prior year in the unrestricted portion. Last year, both of these numbers were positive. Those, those changes are primary, primarily related to both the acquisition of assets, which increases the top line, net investment in capital assets. That has increased during the year, as well as the effects of these pension and other post-retirement obligation effects. Little data on the, on the revenues and expenses here. Couple items of note, governmental activity revenues dropped to forty-eight point nine million this year. Last year, they were fifty-nine million, based on what we're seeing as primarily related to intergovernmental revenues. There's just less money coming from outside agencies. Business type revenues increased. They increased the amount of five million from just a little over eight million. So, overall, we saw a little bit of a dip in revenues, although we did see some positive from revenues. Expenses are within one percent this year from what they were last year, which I think has been an effort of finance team to maintain good cost controls. And so, those are, those are within right about one percent where they felt last year at fifty-four point seven million for governmental activities and seven point two for business-type. Once again, there at the bottom affecting that position are some of the statements, and those are related to some of those accounting changes. What we've got here is sort of a breakdown of the general fund revenues. Breakdown of where the taxes fall as a percentage of total revenues, including some of the option sales taxes revenues. As you can see, the most significant item on there is the restricted intergovernmental revenues. Those are budgeted at twenty-two million, with only about thirteen million in receipts. On the positive side, looking at the added loan taxes, the tax collection rate improved slightly this year to just a little over ninety-five, ninety-five percent. I think it was ninety-five point nine, or somewhere in that neighborhood last year. So just kind of a high-level budget to actual look here. And then on the far-right side is a percentage comparison, or the percentage, percentage of each of them. We've got the same side here, just breaking down general fund expenditures. Again, on the left side, we have the budget, actual and bill, and then the prior year for comparison. We did see some increasing costs in a couple areas. However, we didn't see any results, some positive variances to budget overall. You can see there at the bottom that debt service costs is a little higher this year. I think that was anticipated based on all the project activity that is ongoing. Most of that began in the prior year. What we've got here is kind of a breakdown, sort of the revenues exceeding expenditures for the general fund. So that was originally budgeted to be a shortfall of four point seven million. It was only a little over six hundred thousand, so very positive budget variance there. On the whole, not a lot of significant items beyond that. Some additional proceeds from initiatives of debt in excess of budget. But on the whole, decent performance compared to budget. And then, and then overall, positive increase to general fund balance. I think this is what you were asking for a few minutes ago, where we have total fund balances as a percentage of expenditures. That remains very strong, thirty-nine percent. Your available fund balance of sixteen million represents just a little under thirty percent of your general fund expenditures, which again is a very healthy margin. And we've got at the bottom the records, those general fund expenditures relative to available fund balances.
But that's not unassigned fund balances in the middle?
It's available fund balance, so not unassigned, but available, available for spending, so...
Do we have an unassigned fund balance number?
You do have an unassigned fund balance.
I mean, sorry, within... I didn't see it.
Uh, left out, left out of the materials, unfortunately. There is an unassigned fund balance.
Is it close to twenty-one percent? We'll have to get that, we'll get that answer later.
It was slightly over twenty percent.
I remember, like, maybe twenty-one, so it was...
No, you're twenty-one. A little under twenty-one percent. However, I believe the board has a target of fifteen percent that it tries to maintain. So above that, above that fifteen percent threshold. Apologies, I don't have that file for I next to you. I've got the breakdown of the tax levy. Spend a ton of time here. I think the key thing to, the key item here is the tax collection percentage, which, which increased this year. So it's very, very positive in that regard. I've got some similar information for the water and sewer funds on the, on the following two pages. Again, just sort of a budget to actual. We had, and generally, what you see is favorable budget to actual performance. Revenues increased slightly compared to, to the prior year, but it was just a sort of small percentage, relatively speaking. Similar stores with operating expenses. Overall, very stable performance from the water issue fund compared, compared to prior year. One of the items that are included down there are the capital contributions. And I think that's related to town of speed projects that they've identified. And on the final page, there's a similar presentation for the solid rice fund. Again, consistent with the prior year. There's some good items of note. Overall, pretty, pretty stable for that fund. Those are the primary highlights I've got. What questions or comments do you have?
Do we think we'll get the final audit?
I expect this week.
As you said, you had to report.
So the way the process works is we, we complete our audit, we get approval from the finance team, and then we provide it to the state. The state gets a chance to review it, ask questions occasionally, make changes. So what we wanted to do was just make sure that we weren't giving you something that could be subject to change going forward. So once that process is complete, and they have given us that final blessing, we'll be back.
We believe you have the ability.
We do.
Is that something we'll face in our LGC meeting tomorrow?
But, you know, we, we maintain a very close relationship with Sharon at the LGC. We talk to them a lot, communicate with them frequently.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we have public petitions. Does anybody like to speak? Please step forward, man, and shake your hand, have a best for the public purpose.
My name is Joan Wilkum. So my address is one eight seven Northwoods Country Road. And I'm here to ask you, ladies and gentlemen, this. Northwoods Country Road is under the control of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. If you all would write a letter to the Raleigh office asking that they reduce the speed limit. Currently, it's forty-five from where you turn off the Tarver Rock to you cross a little bridge, and then it's fifty-five. Most people are driving sixty on the fifty-five section and fifty-five on the twenty-five section. And I myself have just gotten just about dead four or five times, including today. Thank goodness, there are no school buses that are out there, but there are big trucks that cover more than their side of the road. This time of year, there are tractors pulling big, huge green tanks. And if somebody flies off going toward Rocky Mountain, it takes five seconds to cover one tenth of a mile. They're not going to have the space and the time to stop. And I'm just thanking God every day that he hasn't had an accident yet. Several of us have contacted the office out across from the community college. But as my dad says, if you want something done, ask the people at the top to do it. So I would appreciate if you all would write a letter to the North Carolina Department of Transportation in Raleigh, asking them to permanently change the speed limits on Northwoods Country Road. Change the forty-five section to thirty-five and change the fifty-five section to forty-five. Thank you for your time and attention.
This situation has got exacerbated recently because of a wreck that occurred on sixty-four Alternative West, requiring them to replace a bridge in parts of New Orleans. All highways, all sixty-four alternate traffic out by the Kingsborough Industrial Park. Between that and eastwards, drivers have to be diverted by this, through it towards. Our letter may be if we can ask in some way to expedite construction of a bridge, but right now, it's not planned to be finished until the end of June this year. It is a deadly road at this time.
Well, I think we can ask, I think we should ask the... To ask the department to review, to review. We've got a citizen request, so we'd ask the, the government to ask them to review the, the speed limits out there. I don't think the board, I don't think, I don't think we can, I don't think we should send a letter stating that it should be... But I do think we can request them to take a look at those speed limits because we have citizens complaining about those speed limits. So I think we should ask them to review that. Any other comments on this? But I also think that you should, and I also think you need to follow up. Any other that, any objections to this? That's next.
Good. Both days, if you have others, you may want to tie it up, no problem. Well, just a minute, we need to talk about some, three things. First off, I have a call with, sitting up in the back. If y'all could talk into the microphone so I can pick it up securely, so people can talk. I will not freely share it with you. There's issues complaining because I think it's our fault, but in case you want complaints. So number two, uh, but I can hear you. Um, number two, and I do know, forget the thoughts. But I attended the sheriff academy, and I have learned so much about the sheriff department. I told you all already, but, um, I know this power, and I don't think anybody... Oh, yeah, it's a small, but I attended it. And we have learned so much, and the community have been very excited. Matter of fact, they don't even want to leave you tonight to do our program. But, um, like I said, we have learned so much. And talk about how much did you guys make? Just, um, I come back before you end and say you really consider. I just didn't know how much, they put their life on the line. It's got to do with, they're talking to people, like, but these guys have really got to see the job. And to compare them with other entities in the county, to me, is just a, a, I would say a low look because nobody else put their lives on the line like these guys do. They are twenty-four hours. We just seen where he just got a sheriff of the year. He's putting in the work, and like I said before, deduct the amount that he was paid from the former sheriff, and so the money was already there. And I'm not here to advocate because I want more money on my job, too. I'm just saying the need for what is going on, the work that's being put in, and also his advocacy, advocating for his whole entire staff. So I think you all need to consider it. I don't know what's the problem with you. I know you may not have money or whatever, but like I say, I do know somebody was there that stood back. So again, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of some other folks that couldn't be here. We would like to see you all look at the budget and try to do something for our sheriff department, sheriff officers. But, uh, you know, you need to find a way to compensate these five fellows and women for the work that they do before we lose them to another county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a dollar, you have a question?
I know. It's worth it.
If anybody has to speak at the... Moving on, consideration of approval of budget amendment. Anything that comes to our attention?
No, sir, but I have to ask anything.
Motion to approve?
I don't know. Um, this is... Yes, sir, it's moving money within departments that's already there. On one line, I wish to...
Any other questions? All in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I.
Aye.
All opposed, here none is approved. Consideration of approval of capital improvement budget for water and sewer department.
Yes, sir, this was being brought to you annually. We last updated this in May of last year. Basically, it's to plan for future build-out, capital purchase that need to be made to maintain existing system. And so, we are required to have a separate capital improvement plan for our water and sewer departments. So it's brought to you with recommendations to...
Motion. Questions? All in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I. All opposed, been done, is approved. Consideration of closing parking, our lease agreement with the town of Tarver, you had it, you read it. And the bottom line is a lease for...
A dollar.
A dollar a year, is the motion.
So...
Questions? All in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I.
Aye.
All opposed, here none is approved. Consideration of approval of public record policy based on your review. Do you have any question? You're not, is the motion?
I'm going to say...
Question? All in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I. All opposed, here none is approved. Consideration of approval of contract management with Wooten Company. Let's go ahead.
Yes, sir, I'll try to shorten my fairly lengthy memo there. Basically, they have been working on drawing the design for a water sewer district six. We have funding lined up from USDA rural development that includes both grant and loan. We are being given, given the opportunity to receive additional grant funds for the project. And so, the plan is to try to, part of the original design was to do some replacement of lines, a lot of repair of lines. With the additional funding, it will allow us to increase the amount, the amount of sewer, sewer lines that will actually be replaced. But that does require some redrafting of the design work. And so, that's the amendment number two with Wooten Company, seventy-nine thousand dollars, which will take it to, not to exceed of six hundred and ninety-five thousand. But of course, this will be paid for with funding from USDA.
Motion.
Sir.
Question? All, all in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I.
Aye.
All opposed, here none is approved. Consideration of request from town of Speed for assistance with that town hall. I think you read it, and if you can approve, while you're doing that question, we're going to raise those questions. But the magic is that simple consideration, just to consider that, if that's all right with the board.
I think it's best thing.
You must, so the motion is careful consideration. We don't need to, you don't, you don't need to...
No motion.
No action required on this item? Consideration of approval of the main policy press of releasing the right to purchase profit from... Through your mark, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So at Kingsborough Investor Park, Dominion Energy plans to build a substation to serve Triangle Tire. The area they have plotted to purchase for the substation extends onto land owned by Three MR Limited Partnership. We have a memorandum of option in place with Three MR to purchase that parcel. Therefore, for Dominion to pursue purchasing this from Three MR, you must, you must first agree to release our right to purchase. Being that this will help to advance the development of Kingsborough, I recommend that the board approve the release of the county's right to purchase. The portion of land is indicated in the attached map and authorize me to execute the necessary documents for this.
Will you release that for a portion of?
Yes, sir.
That portion of? About one point... Motion. Any other question? Any question? All in favor, that be no matter votes, I, I. All opposed, here none is approved. Consideration of approval of the current county being... Consideration of approval of the current county being that sub plus the recommended actions. He has to just plus and dispose of a list on the, is there a motion?
Two more.
Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is approved. Consideration of approval of the Unit M fact grant for sure. You've seen the grant. Want any comments on that, Mr. Chairman?
Just to note that this is to support their coordinated opiate recovery effort, and it does not require a man.
Got any questions, Sheriff, this is? Here and now, did I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
Here and opposed? Here and now, is approved. Consideration of approval of corporate agreement, vocalization of reserve. You've, you've read the agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is approved. Consideration of approval of memorandum of agreement for acquisition to relocation assistance.
Yes, sir. To assist those affected by hurricane flood and participating in the HMGP buyout program, North Carolina Division of Emergency Manages making available state acquisition relocation funds for SAW. These funds provide a gap payment that may not exceed fifty thousand dollars to help a family relocate from a damaged home to a comparable home outside of the floodplain. The total allocation for Edgecombe County, and actually I need to make a correction, since we received this and it was put in your agenda packet, we've sent, we've received a revised MOA that has increased that amount so that there is sufficient funding to cover those from the town of Tuxedo for which we are administering a program for the town of Tuxedo. So, now the total amount of the MOA is two million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. I recommend that you accept the grant by approving the memorandum of agreement budget ordinance and budget amendment as presented.
Motion. Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now. Consideration of request for funding for headstrong coverage.
Yes, sir. Attached is a request from Edgecombe County Rescue Squad for an additional three-hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation for the current fiscal year. This will take the total appropriation to one-point-five million dollars. As you know, we have been closely monitoring the fiscal management of the Rescue Squad over the last two years. My staff and I have met with their leadership monthly for the last year. As my assessment, their operations have been managed to minimize costs where possible, but their revenues from billing have been lower than budgeted. This has created a cash flow shortage. In order to continue operations for the remainder of fiscal year, I recommend that you approve an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars to the Rescue Squad. However, I would, I also suggest that your action include the stipulation that if their shortfall proves to be less than the amount requested, the difference be deducted from their appropriation next fiscal year. Mr. John Britt, who is chief of Rescue Squad is here, and I believe perhaps some of their, one or two of the board members might be here if you have some.
Listen, you all have any comments to add, you, Mr. Britt? Or Mr. Mark?
Get as much mileage as we can.
You recommend we approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Okay. If you move it, did that show a motion?
Yes.
You say we approve, I guess we, we got, I mean, there's, is there a motion, is that second? Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is approved. Approve, approve without questions, that's unusual. Consideration of approval of project agreement, that's right. NCDOT takes a stand for it. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As already, as it's already been stated, the Department of Transportation has been a great partner with us in our development project, Kingsborough. In an effort to continue their assistance with the project, NCDOT is proposing the following two agreements. The first agreement would allow DOT to take on the site preparation for the Kingsborough Training Facility by adding it as a supplement to their existing contract with the foreign deal. This will expedite the preparation of the site and ready it for construction by our targeted start date of June first. This will be paid for with funds recently allocated to us from the Goldhoney Foundation. The second agreement is to assist with the pre-development costs at Kingsborough associated with Triangle, the Triangle Tire Project. Carolina's Gateway Partnership facilitated and paid for a number of pre-development activities in order to create the site plan used for the project. These costs are above and beyond the usual services provided by the partnership for which we give an annual allocation. NCDOT will provide funding to the county to reimburse those costs. I recommend that you take separate action on each agreement to approve them as presented.
The fresh agreement is?
Yes, sir, the, the agreement for the, the site preparation for the Kingsborough Training Facility.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Second. Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
Next agreement.
Is, is the agreement to provide funding to reimburse Carolina's Gateway Partnership for pre-development?
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is approved. That's it.
Yes, sir.
No comments? We have complete, how, do we, is he directly?
Yes, sir, so you have at your place some recommendations. Ms. Harris made some recommendations for several of those, many of those will appreciate that. And so, you will remember at your last meeting, you had already appointed Deborah Coley for the Asian Population Representative, Ms. Bette Battle, our interim DSS Director, or her designee, or the Social Services Representative. And so, you have the rest of these slots that are recommendation board.
And how, I'll be, does this fill up all of the slots?
This will fill up all of the slots.
And before you take action, I think the board just needs to consider, if there's somebody, if there's somebody that you would like to consider in these, or is this sufficient? And I'm all right with it, I just, the board members still have an opportunity. Is everybody all right with this? If, if so, is there a motion to approve? This is, this, let me read it. Executive Bishop, Ms. Harris, the Facebook community, Kelle Andrews, Asian Population, it's called, but it's, it's called Community College, Dr. Gregory, Paul.
Coley's on there twice.
She is.
You mean Deborah Jordan?
Deborah Jordan. Manesworth, we're not, Manesworth, Rapp, Deborah Jordan, Non-Confiscious, Dr. Skip, Public Community, Mr. Art Brackler, Town Comrades, Mrs. Supreme, Stu Sisson, Dr. Battle Bridges, Hispanic Community, is that Mrs. Maria El Fazal? El Fazal.
El Fazal.
El Fazal. Pronounce it.
Maria El Fazal.
It's, it's pronunciation.
I love Maria.
Okay, at large members, Mr. Val Hallam, Mr. Senator France, Mr. Sean Jenkins, Mr. Neil Akbar, is that correct?
Naomi.
Naomi Akbar, okay. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'm moved.
Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, uh, we have one. Human recognition commission, we have one, they can see the recommendations that we want, Mr. Rossley and Mr. Leo Taylor. No, no, Mr. Leo Taylor and Mr. Jerome Meyer creating another position on that board. Is there a motion?
Well, I don't really think we need one.
Well, you, if.
My motion would be to accept, Mr. Taylor.
And mine, and, and there's a second to that. Here it is. You have, you have, you have, excuse me. The first motion was to take this agreement. Second? We get a second, I second Mr. Mark's vote. Do you have an amendment motion?
Well, I made mine to, I served on the Armed Relations Commission and looking at the bounds, seeing that Mr. Taylor would be a good addition, but I didn't think we actually needed him though.
Well, all in favor, the most, let me know my votes, sign aye. All opposed? Motion to pass, six one. Ashcombe, Word Library, who have trusted, there's one, they said, to the past, Mr. Lawrence Trump. Pundell Chanel, is that right? Chanel? I need to let y'all read this, don't, I'm. No, there, there, there's more than one pronunciation, okay? Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is one. Upper Coast of Plain Council Government, the two Vegas, one Commission Department, two past, Mr. Johnson Belton, and one of ours position as Matt Phil, was Mr. Opaud, who came in Philadelphia, in Ellis Valley. Any recommendations? Mr. Webb, would you like, would you like to serve?
I would, sir.
I, I know that Mr. Webb should serve as the Commissioner of the Department of Public Police, Council of Government. Is that second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, we have a commissioner, and we have one at large, and we have a recommendation coming. Right, there's another one, that's the next one. Contract for review and approval. Anything that you want to our attention?
No, sir, you have two in there, and I have to answer the question.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Question. All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
All opposed?
Out for less and releases for review, anything for our attention?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here and now, is approved. Department of Reports for Review. You've got those in your, in your agenda. Any questions on Water Services? Financial Service? Hurricane Recovery Update?
I would like to point out that we have closed on seven of the buyout projects or buyout properties for the Kansas HMGP project. It closed this past Friday, and the new full-time attorney, the fantastic guy, and Ed Thompson did as well, and that went smooth. And we have others that will be lining up.
You got some, you want me to?
We get the ground running.
Okay. Midlake Relocation Project, go ahead. Anything you need, man?
No, there's still, still two that have not yet signed an agreement. We do have one of those that is scheduled to come into the office this week to sign the agreement, so we're very hopeful about that.
Okay. For our extension, you got the minus report, go ahead.
No, sir, just for your view, if you have any questions.
Minus report, go ahead.
A, a number of items here, most of these are reports I typically give. I would like to highlight, oh, the one about the wall that heels, you'll see that Edgecombe Veterans Military Museum will be hosting. It is a replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. It is a traveling memorial. It will be here in the county. From what I understand, that this is, draws a lot of visitors to this wall, and so, I just wanted you to be, be aware.
Anything else you need to report?
I, I would like to point out, you do have at your place proposed dates for upcoming meetings or joint meeting with Edgecombe County Public Schools for your, your three-member budget committee for, for me to review the proposed budget with them prior to having your budget work session, joint meeting with National High Amount Schools, and then the budget work session, and then proposing to have a public hearing for the budget approval itself at your June third. And so, what I'd ask you to do, if you would, just check these dates, and if they, if you have any conflicts and you like to propose other dates, just let me know.
Looking at those dates, I'm trying now. Anybody got anything to tie around? Here and now, you've already checked the school system.
I've not got a confirmation from Edgecombe Schools, I have.
What day, what day is that?
Some Monday, typically, I have to be.
You might not have started any of that.
Only May twenty-first.
May twenty-first, budget work session? We have, if you say it, may, um. Let's just keep it tied with that.
Yeah. I just want to be able to.
May twenty-first. Okay, good. Anybody? Okay, seems we, most of them, can be, don't they? There's a change with sources.
And I follow most.
Commission reporter, thank you, Commissioner. It's not attorney. At this time, we have a closed session scheduled to, to, to develop, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any question? All in favor, let me know my votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and now, if you want to, that's the next one.